Welcome back to the school committee meeting, December 20th, 2018. We have returned from executive session. I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded, so please silence your devices. Do we have any public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll have our students up for the student report.
Yeah, hello, everybody. So, at the high school, it's two days before winter break, so everyone's very excited for the holiday season.
Yeah, I know that the school is kind of decorated. We have wrapping paper all up on the columns, and we have different twinkly lights, and I know that some of the fundraisers for the holidays are coming. I know there's, I think it's the, one of the classes is doing guess how many candy canes there are, and if you get it right, you get a gift card. And then today, we did Candy Cane Grams, where you could send someone a message in a candy cane.
Yeah, also going back just to the last school committee meeting, there was, there was also a chorus concert that night. Trying to, I don't know, backtrack a little out of order tonight, but there was a chorus concert that night. All 201 kids in concert choir fit onstage, which was, which was good. Also, in addition, for the choral department, Scarlet Black Singers and Treble Choir have made a lot of trips to various tree lightings in the area. They went to Governor Baker's tree lighting, which was, which looks like really cool. I, yeah, I talked to a lot of the kids who went, and they said that that was, like, pretty awesome. And also, at the Stevens College Estate, they've been there to sing too, so I think that's holiday spirit.
And then they have the band concert, so all of the namos getting real busy.
Yeah, besides the music department, the winter sports season has begun. I know girls track yesterday, went 5-0 in their, they had like a six-way meet that happened. I don't know how that works, but they, they went 5-0, which I, which is big.
Great.
And then, I mean, today, we had the alumnis come back, and I'm sure Jack can talk a little bit more about that, since he was actually there.
Yeah, so, the, today was the alumni brunch and, like, Q&amp;A session that Mr. Nugent put on for the juniors, and some seniors went too. I think it was more geared toward the juniors. And it was, it was really nice to have last year's graduating class come back and just have, like, a Q&amp;A session about the college transition, college application progress, process. It was really beneficial, I think, for my class, 'cause everyone's kind of starting to think about it, but doesn't really know where to start thinking about it. It's, it's a very, like, busy and focused process that is gonna happen. And it was really cool to catch up with some old friends and see old faces again.
Yeah, and I definitely think, like, I know in the past, it was just, like, seniors, and I think, I really liked, I know last year, they kind of did the transition where they did both juniors and seniors, and I don't know, I feel like it was a good one, 'cause I feel like by now, like, if you apply early action, like, I know I've applied to all my schools, so like, a big part of it that they talk about is the college experience, but also, like, applications, and like, where to start looking. And so I feel like I really think it was a good transition to have the juniors be the class.
Yeah, it was definitely really helpful. I learned a lot that I did not know that I need to know, so that was good. So, that was good. I definitely think it's a good idea to have juniors at that assembly. Yeah, otherwise, we have two days, almost, almost holiday break. Can't wait.
One, like, half day.
One day, one day. Yeah, two days until, yeah, yeah.
You're saying you have the most.
Yeah.
It's as long as it is.
Yeah, half day, yeah, half day, 30-minute classes, that's right, yeah.
Awesome.
All right, well, otherwise.
Final report of 2018.
Yeah.
All right.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Have a great break. Okay, consent agenda, approval of minutes.
So, I will move to approve the minutes for the November 29th meeting, as presented in the packet, sorry.
I have some amendments to the minutes. Do you need a second before we have that conversation?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Mr. Trizzi. Any discussion?
Yes, discussion. Mr., under present, it says Mr. Mealy was present, he was not. Under the motion for executive session, it says Ms. Mably moved, which is accurate, and Mr. Teresi seconded, that is not accurate. It should be Mr. McDevitt seconded. And the vote was 4-0, Mr. Lynch, excuse me, Ms. Lynch, Ms. Mably, Mr. McDevitt, Ms. Picard. Mr. Teresi was not present.
I came in late to that executive session, right?
Yeah, we were, we were, yeah, you came into executive session at 9:20, so you were, like, you know, a couple, just a couple minutes late. And then, at the end, in the adjournment, it says the vote was 4-0. It should be the vote was 5-0, and in addition to the fore-named, Mr. McDevitt was present.
All right.
The meat of the matter is.
I'll look it up tomorrow.
And, oh, I, I, sorry, we have one more.
Keep going.
Under the approval of the minutes, Mr. Teresi was present, as well as Mr. McDevitt, so it should be 5-0.
I abstained.
Oh, no, 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 you did abstain. I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. That's fine.
Yeah, 'cause I had missed, I had missed that meeting.
All right. Are you ready to vote?
It doesn't sound.
Yep. Mr. Trizzi?
Yes.
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 And yes, 5-0. All right, superintendent's report.
First and foremost, I'd like to introduce a junior at the College of the Holy Cross, Benjamin Witten. He is interning for us right now, getting some experience within the school district. And the nice thing is, Ben's willing to do anything. Besides attending a school committee meeting tonight, and then working with us, really, he's off till January 20th. We have a lot of opportunities for Ben to work, but he spent the day-to-day in the lunchroom at the Bradstreet, helping out. And at recess, tonight, he's at school committee meeting, and he'll be doing some work in this office, and possibly directing traffic at the Bradstreet and some other things. So, he's literally doing everything from office work, to some writing for us, to directing traffic, to lunch duty.
Just a normal day.
Yeah.
It's part of the central office, huh?
He's, he's really terrific and flexible.
Awesome. Good to see you back.
And just, I'm gonna go through this real quickly. Awesome, Atkinson opened up their playground yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't know if you saw it on Twitter, it was really cool. Big thanks to actually Jim Mealy, Andrew Mailer, couldn't have done it with both of them, and I'd have to say that Greg Landry and Colleen LaGro were instrumental in getting this thing up and running. So, Colleen's the PTO president, Greg is the principal.
Can I just say really quick, I mean, I think if people haven't had an opportunity to drive by and see that, it's amazing. I really didn't get from the grasp of, or the design of the fields committee, the size that it, that it is, and the proximity to the school, so, you know, the lunchroom and all of that is right there. It is, it is amazing facility there, so it's great.
Well, the amount of time that they've captured back about getting out to recess from going through the whole building is pretty great.
Yeah, and, you know, the plan for next year, hopefully for the fall, or in that project, they'll be paving another area, so then they'll transition from pavement on one side, where the kids meet, that will become a parking lot, actually, and they'll be on the other side.
Right.
So, cool.
Also, John Borjese.
Oh, I can't forget John. John's been awesome. So, the NAMs Band did an unbelievable job with a holiday concert down at the senior center. As you guys know, many of you have been signed up by Gil for the senior center over the next few months, so that'll be exciting. I was at Kittredge the other day for the Gingerbread Kid Play by the second graders. It's really amazing that, like, the second graders really memorized all their lines. They were singing, dancing, and I even got a cameo appearance, so it was fun.
Were you loud? What is yours from that?
Yes, it was. Bradstreet today had a spirit day. The reason I mention it is the Tribune, it sounds like it's slow, and they need some pictures. Well, it's a slower time of year.
Like human interest stories.
Yeah, so it's really cool. Zoe called, and she tried to get in the day before, but, so, there may be some pictures of the Bradstreet kids tomorrow in the trip, so take a look. Hopefully, it's our busy news night, and they get bummed, but we're excited about that. The high school alumni breakfast was terrific today. The sergeant, I don't know if you saw on Twitter, the sergeant, they, the PTO and the kids, they put together so many gifts for that. Youth and a gift drive that they donated was pretty awesome. The Thompson fifth graders were up at Brightview, the seniors up there, and they did some crafts with them.
Snowmeltin' Day, was it?
Yeah, and then they got to talk with the old folks. My son sat with a guy that said, "Never play football." Tackle football, he said, his arm, his shoulder, he had, like, 14 injuries, so I don't think my son's ever gonna wanna play football. And, let's see, the sergeant, oh, the Franklin School, big thanks to John Borjese again, Jim Stanford from the DPW, Andrew Mailer, Jim Mealy. You know, there's a piece of property, we, it's in kind of Never Neverland, it's from the Berkeley neighborhood to the Franklin, so it's part of a development or a trust. We're not sure, I mean, this has been an ongoing issue, but it floods, and we have a ton of kids that come through there, and we've had short-term solutions, long-term solutions, and the DPW is really great at helping, but they built some type of bridge that looks like it's gonna work, so.
Oh, good.
It was a really difficult situation for the neighbors over there, they were really stressed about it, so. Excited that the DPW and the town could help out.
That's great.
And last but not least, so Nikki Murphy, who works on Donna's department, she has an SEL website, and she's also on Twitter, but I retweeted it tonight, so she's at naps_sel. And if you're interested in reading an academic study, it's a really good one on CAP and Online, it's the results from four large-scale meta-analyses that show student participation in SEL program, and what we're trying to develop here in North Andover, and we are developing, have some, enhances academic success, positive social behavior, reduces conduct problems, and reduces emotional distress. So, we know those things to be true, I just think sometimes it's nice to not just say it, but to say, "Hey, go check out this peer-reviewed academic article." That's superintendent's report.
Excellent. For the chair's report, I just have two items. One, congratulations to the football team on their Super Bowl victory, which happened since our last meeting. And my second is a logistical request for next month. We are scheduled to meet on the 3rd, the 17th, and the 31st. I was wondering if it was okay if we swapped the 17th with the 24th? If anybody has a conflict with that? And I will be out of town, but Amy can chair it if, if we can't switch it.
I don't, I don't have my calendar with me, so I can't respond to that.
Okay.
So, we've been moving the 17th to the 24th?
Yes.
I can do that, if it works out.
I, I think I can do that as well.
I'm definitely in.
Okay.
I'll make the work, I may have something else, but if you need to do it, I don't know, I definitely need to do it.
All right, so we can say tentative, and if we, if you get back to me and you can't, then we can.
I'm pretty sure I have another work obligation on the 24th, but, you know, if we have to do it without one of us, we, you know.
That's fine, we can leave it as scheduled too, and Amy can chair it too, that's fine.
Should we get back to you?
Yes.
By email?
Yes.
Could you do, maybe just move it ahead?
I, I could do the 10th. There is that Dr. Poty event that night.
Oh, the addiction?
Yeah, that's.
Which, yeah, I think we all want to go to, so.
Oh, we already have one on the 31st.
Right.
Yeah, on the 31st.
That's what I was thinking. So, we have the.
We like to have three anyway for the.
Right, because of. We need a public hearing for the budget.
Yeah.
So, the third is the presentation of the budget, and the 24th is supposed to be the.
Public hearing.
Correct.
And the 31st is the actual vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so just get back to me. We'll make a tentative, and then, thank you.
All right.
All right, old business.
I'm sorry, just flossing. Do they have to be on Thursday nights?
They don't, actually.
No.
There's nothing, I mean.
No.
Are you with that entire week? I mean.
No, I have a memorial service, so I'm leaving actually that Thursday. So, yeah, I could do it earlier, in the week.
We've always just.
I know.
Because of when we were in town hall.
Yeah.
But we haven't, we've never.
Also, people are used to Thursdays, I think.
Right.
Yeah, but sometimes, I mean, we have, we have, like, two meetings, stuff like that, so maybe there's another solution, 'cause I'm not sure that's gonna work for me either. I, I just.
Okay. Well, if it won't work for two of you, then we'll keep it on the 17th, that's fine.
That is just always a wonder to sit there.
Right.
Or if you send the information to Bev, she can kind of coordinate it.
Kind of do a fast Google Doc or something like that, I can make it, I can't make it.
Bev, can we do a fast Google Doc?
I think we just got it.
Probably.
Okay.
All right, thanks. All right, moving on to old business, we have the second reading of the Hawaii Island Science Camp trip.
So, from north end of a high school, Charlie Anderson and Bennett Hearn.
Good evening.
Hmm? Oh, sorry. I'm good.
Good evening.
He speaks first.
Oh, actually, I don't think you guys have probably ever met for a second reading.
Nope.
It's like, well, that was easy.
So, typically, the first reading, they go over if they have any questions. Sometimes we have people in, it's not, it's pretty common that we have people come back. But certainly, just a little bit for the viewing audience, the Reader's Digest version of what the trip is, and these folks might have a couple of questions on the school committee.
Well, 'cause it's actually a course, it's not just a trip.
Yes.
So, that's important.
Yep.
My one question, I know, and I'm not trying to be foolish, but I know it says, which includes everything, does that include the tuition?
Yes, correct, yeah. So, just a little background for the viewing audience at home. Okay, just a quick synopsis of the.
Of this particular trip? Yeah, so we're, so it's gonna be geology and marine biology ecology class. We've done a similar class in Yellowstone, as you guys know, for the last couple of years. We just figured we'd switch it up, try some other places, and we'd been kind of looking around for other institutions that would be able to accommodate us, like the Teton Science School did. And I found this one in Hawaii, and I've been talking to the head of this Science Camps of America, and they were very excited to have something like this. They do two summer camp sessions every summer, and then, and, but that's all they do, and then their facilities kind of sit there and are rented out for weddings, or family reunions, or stuff like that, the rest of the time. And, you know, I sort of mentioned, it's like, well, would you be interested in doing a sort of third, sort of private session, where we bring the whole, you know, all the kids, they're all coming from this town, and they have the cafeteria, and the bunkhouses, and the vans, and the teachers, and everything, so they'll just add another, hire their teachers for an extra week, and, and do this program. And so we'll look at volcanology, you know, we'll get out there and do some coral reef and beach erosion stuff. We're looking at forest succession, 'cause you start off with these really cool lava flows that have absolutely nothing, how do they end up as, you know, with soils and plants and vegetation?
And island evolution, too.
Yep, island evolution, and endangered invasive species, since those are huge issues in Hawaii. So, we've, very similar to what we did in Yellowstone, but a little bit different takes, just because of the different locale.
The marine factor, right?
Yeah, mainly the marine factor, yep.
So, you are not looking to do a Yellowstone trip next year?
Uh, go ahead.
Well, we, we, the high school, are not doing a Yellowstone trip. The Teton Science School and the North Andover High School have kind of forged a good relationship. We had a space reserved, and we didn't want to forfeit that and potentially lose that spot in the future, so we made it available to the middle school. We've been working with Craig Richards. He was actually, if we were gonna go to Yellowstone, he would have been our third chaperone, and then we got, you know, word from the Hawaii Science Camp, and so we asked him if he wanted to take over that trip and run it for the middle school.
Is that taking place, are they gonna do that?
They're still waiting on numbers.
Yeah, I don't know what their numbers are. They're gonna check in with us tomorrow. And as far as future years, we may do, try something else, or we may, you know, alternate or something. We're just, we're having trouble getting kids to sign up for Yellowstone, being the, you know, third year in a row, and we're wondering if we might have saturated the market. So, we figured we'd try some, another place.
I, I like the concept of conceivably alternating that. I mean, I think that might kind of keep it new and fresh, and you're tapping, you know, kids every other year. What's the cost of the Yellowstone trip again? Do you remember off the top?
It's $3,500.
$3,500.
It's pretty close, yeah. I thought it was.
I thought it was pretty close. And they get two and a half credits for this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the only difference in price between the Hawaii and the Yellowstone trip is just the airline tickets, about $300 bucks more.
Right, right.
What is the minimum number of students you need for this to happen?
16.
And how many, how many are seriously interested?
I have 16 checks in my little folder.
Oh. That's serious.
Yeah, and then we've got, I've got till the end of April to try and scrape up four more. With the optimum number, price-wise, would be 20, that's the maximum they, we decided we wanted to do, and if that's the case, then the price point will go down a little bit.
Okay.
Charlie was super respectful. I talked to him one of their PD days, and we were doing NEAS together, and I said that the school committee, I've never known him to ever turn down a trip, but one of the things we wanted to start getting in the habit of doing is not having the tickets already bought, and then we have to come for a first reading, or a second reading, and then, so, yeah, nice job with the process, guys.
So, I have a question about refunds, so, the first 500, but then it says the rest would not be refundable. Do the kids get trip insurance, so that if something comes up, if they have an illness or all that kind of stuff, so then that would be refundable as part of the trip insurance? Not just like, "Hey, I decided I don't wanna go because..."
Yeah, we don't get the cancel-for-any-reason insurance. We get the sort of next step, 'cause cancel-for-any-reason is very expensive.
Yeah.
We get the next step down, which has a whole list of things, you know, work-related, school-related, you know, stuff like that, where obviously illnesses, or, you know, death in the family, that kind of thing. And it also includes medical insurance, loss of luggage, you know, all that, all that sort of stuff, too.
Great, thanks.
Just one, one other question or comment. I think these courses are phenomenal, really interesting and intriguing, thank you for pursuing them. Have you ever, or would you ever consider pursuing another opportunity at a lower price point, maybe closer, for people who are interested and just can't swing this sort of price point?
I think our goal in general is to do more experiential learning opportunities, and whether that takes us, you know, to New Hampshire or to Hawaii, the goal is to get kids out of the classroom, so, absolutely.
That's great, thank you.
And we did, when I first approached Kelly Driscoll about this three years ago, we had a whole series of classes kind of lined up, and one of them, which Carolyn Wojcik ran, was a local marine biology course, where they just did day trips every day for a week. So, they went on a whale watch, they went to Woods Hole, they went to the Great Bay Marine Science Center, and that sort of stuff. So, we did have that in place, and she was doing it, but then, obviously, life happens. And, and we haven't, nobody's kind of stepped up, the, mostly other scientists, teachers have, you know, very dizzy with their families, so that nobody's really been interested in doing something like that since then.
That could be a good option in terms of the alternating, too, right? I mean, if you had, I mean, obviously Woods Hole is world famous, you know, and there's gotta be some resources there, you know, even something in the Caribbean, you know, which, I'm not saying it's gonna be, you know, $1,200, but, you know, it might not be that, almost $4,000.
Right.
And that, that's where I think I get a little cautious about, every year, it's always, you know, these $4,000 trips, and then, you know, these are typically the students that are re-banned, and so they're, you know, traveling to Nashville, you know, everywhere else, right?
Yeah.
It just, I have a high school right now, so it's even more expensive. So, I mean, I think that the trip is amazing, and I, I just, I wanna be really cautious of that kind of going forward, that, that as we alternate, we try, try to make sure that we've got things that are more affordable to families. And maybe there's two of them that are run, you know, like, if you've got a max of 20, but, you know, it's maybe a $2,000 trip, that, you know, we can, you know, to get 40 kids to go and do something, but it doesn't have to be that $4,000 thing, so, that's just where I would be cautious. Okay.
But thank you, too, you said it's hard for people to step up and take them on, thank you for doing that, because that's a pretty special opportunity.
I am available at the chaperone. You surprised how many people.
Yeah, nobody wanted to do it for Yellowstone, I understand.
Yellowstone's amazing.
It is, but all you do is say the word camping, and everybody goes running the opposite direction. No shower for five days.
This'll be state 50 for me if I can do it. Someone is jumping on board for Nate's classroom very quickly.
State 50, wow.
That's impressive.
It is impressive. Any other discussion?
Travis, I must approve the, the trip to Hawaii, to the Science Camps of America, as presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trizzi, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
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 Aloha.
Have a great.
Thank you.
We appreciate the support.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you for the work.
Dr. Gilligan, your entry report.
Okay. So, I just finished my last entry meeting, just last Thursday, at the Sergeant School with the faculty, and it was really interesting, you know, having been in the district 21 years, I try to schedule a lot of things in the summer, and I feel like in some sense, people said, "Oh, no, we can wait till the school year starts," and then we had the gas and the AB/EECC opening up, so, but, I just finished up last week, so, Joe, if you know the process, so, an invitation was issued to the community to participate in this process. Community, group, staff meetings, meeting with people one-on-one, a wide range of employees from the town manager, Rick Gorman, to Merrimack College, Salem State, different representatives, both state and federal. So, we had over 1,100 individuals took part in the online survey or attended the meetings, which I thought was great. And for each survey question, a smaller number actually responded, so the N indicates the number of respondents to each question. All the open-ended survey responses were coded, you know, by category, so that we could get a real, like, snapshot of the input from the folks. And then the response analysis, the percentages in this analysis, they don't always add up to 100, 'cause sometimes there's fewer participants, and actually, some of them can actually add up to more than 100, because when they ask one question, it's raise and something else. Only the most common response categories are reported. So, I think the most important thing is, when I came to, coming into this job, is I explained to folks that I met with, whether it's at schools, whether it's in town hall, senior center, the library, with faculties, with PTOs, I said that I have a long historical perspective of this district, but I come to you in the sense of saying, "I don't know, I'm pretending I'm coming to this brand-new and don't know anything, because it's a new set of eyes." But more importantly, they're experts in their own perspectives, in their own experiences, and those probably, those could be very different than mine. I'm pretending I'm coming to this brand-new and don't know anything because it's a new set of eyes. But more importantly, they're experts in their own perspectives and their own experiences and those probably, those could be very different than mine. So, it was great, really candid. So what I did is you'll see in this, the different folks that participated, a huge, a good, I think that's a good section of, group of parents. Three hundred and forty staff members, I thought was really good.
That's awesome.
You know, the one thing that I'm going to do, you know, the student participation was mostly online. I do think I'm going to probably meet with high school and middle school for sure and see if I can just have a focus group outside of this, just to meet with them and see what they're thinking. So I'm going to organize that with Chad and George. And I might even do the fifth graders as well at the schools because they, the student councils at most of the schools, I know my son's on the student council, and they talk about really interesting things and they have ideas for the schools, so. Community members fifty-nine and other twenty, so. So when you're really looking, what I did is I took all respondents, parents, staff, students, community members, I put the N in and what percentage. But when I looked at the folks that participated, and particularly the group of what's best about North Andover, what do we want to preserve at all costs? What do they feel most proud of? It could be district-wide, but it was really from, most of it through the perspective of where they had kids at school. I did go to one meeting once where I felt like I met with all the people because they had people at the middle school and kids at the elementary, so. It was really interesting. But certainly, it was raised and a lot of times it was raised and. Raised, the staff, the sense of community and the academics were the top four. And at the end, I'm going to talk a little bit more about big ideas and also talk, I need some more time, I think, over break. I want to digest all this, reflect a little more and then put together a little bit of an executive summary with some synthesis and analysis of what this means. You know, and this is just another breakdown of, you know, what do you see as the aspects? So, like I said, it's raised, just another way for you guys to look at it.
I mean, odd observation maybe, but only fourteen students did this, so I'm going to assume that they're probably high school.
Yeah.
You know, because of access to email and all that stuff. But it is interesting to me that raised and sense of community are really the two things that they, they're the only two things that they voted on. You know, I wouldn't necessarily expect them to do, you know, staff, but I, I mean, I think it's kind of interesting, you know, the programs, the curriculum, the arts and music, kind of none of that hit there, but really, I mean, I think we, we, these, these kids have all started in raise and are now, you know, they've had twelve years of raise. I mean, I think, I think Jesse's class was the first class of it. They got the full experience in it. I don't know, I mean, I, I think that's interesting.
Raised is really unique, I think, to North Andover. I think that's an interesting perspective. I think with that low number, I'll be really interested to actually go face-to-face with some of these groups. I think that we'll, that I'll be able to get more valuable information.
Well, these are probably the most engaged kids and that's why they...
It, it could be and it could also be, you know, like, community programs, like, I don't think they probably get and understand, like, the U Center and the programs that we offer that aren't necessarily offered in other places, that they probably just take for granted.
Yeah.
From a student perspective. But I would have thought those would have been a little bit higher with some of the parents, not necessarily the raised. Yeah, I'm like, I'm kind of...
Yeah, it's interesting that, that almost every group, it diminishes in the same way.
Yeah.
Right? And that, it's not surprising to me that community members had the exact same two, right, as the students did. That that was important to them. To me, thinking about the students, and they've had a lot of changes in the academics over the years here, and I think it's been positive for them. So I think it, it's not necessarily a negative thing that they didn't say that they wanted to preserve the academics no matter what because we've made so many good changes over the years, so they might be thinking like, we don't need to, you know, we don't need to preserve the music program as it is because it can be better, you know, and it's gotten better over the years. Or, you know, the physics program or the...
Sure.
Well, I would say certainly, it's, it's difficult to tell, you know, how long the parents in the surveys have been here necessarily and then maybe for future superintendents, something to put in. But it was really remarkable how many people have just moved to our community and raised was the big topic for them, so.
Well, that's great.
Yeah.
Cool.
And I'm not going to read all of them, but as you go, I did pick, if you could go to the next slide, Jim.
The one after that.
The one after that. So I set this up in a way that all of them, they'd go like this. So, although raised was the top one, I also tried to pick representative quotes from the smaller percentages as well on those different topics. So, you know, raised obviously was one. It's interesting, there was, you know, sometimes advice, even though advice was a question, continued to be visible in the district. Communication, especially working parents, athletics, the community programs, athletics, art, gym, library. Challenging academics and varied curriculum and rigorous curriculum and differentiated learning. So, it's interesting because you see these for a lot of folks who are really important. But just remember, as you look back, some of these quotes are representative of smaller percentages. But I wanted to get representative quotes for, you know, kind of the areas that were brought up. So when you look at question two, which the school district most needs to work on, class size was number one. A close second one was stability and leadership. And number three was special education. And I can kind of take you through those quotes as well. You guys can start.
Can you make up the, I'm sorry, Greg?
Yep.
I just want to fill some of your time there.
Sure.
Only nineteen of the staff said class size. Is that I'm reading correctly?
Yeah, nineteen of the staff, class size.
What?
Yeah, and, and remember, you know, these, these are questions, but also depending on what's going on, you know, there's... It's interesting because there were some schools that, you know, where you saw staff members that that was really passionate about. And then others, I don't think that they're not interested in decreasing class size because decreasing class size across everything was the number one. I think it was really about other challenges as well, in terms of support, in terms of special education, in terms of SEL, in terms of servicing our high-needs populations. So, I often wonder, and I thought with this, I don't think it's because they don't think class size is very important, but I think also in addition to decreasing class size to meet the needs that I just mentioned.
Right.
They also are looking for support in those other areas as well.
I can understand why the, as far as the staff goes, wanting to have superintendent consistency at the top. I mean, you've got so much turnover at your position.
And redirection.
Yeah, redirection, new vision, yeah. So I could see that being a, a top one. They're just going to just jump down that and go, sorry, go out there.
You know, I think, the other thing that could talk to that, and I've thought about this one, and that's why I also want to take more time to digest because I just finished my last meeting last week, is that, you know, places, there, you know, certain schools in the district have just been used to the size. You know, the middle school has the highest class size. There's no more room to put people. So the middle school didn't, I, I know that that's probably one of their top areas, but they're like, okay, it's been like this. This is what we deal with and they had certainly other areas. When I went to that middle school meeting, I thought it was strange that no one had mentioned class size. I brought it up at the end and people were like, yeah, but it wasn't a response that they gave me, which was really interesting. Because what are they going to do? There is no more space. I also think in terms of the elementary, that we're making such progress with the class size.
That's what I was going to say.
That people are really encouraged that we continue to chip away.
Right.
I think one of the challenges that we're going to face that, you know, this spring is, how do we define success with class size? Because effectively, like, say we got down to seven point nine, it may be to the point where if we average out all the classes across the district, we meet that goal, but we also know that, you know, Kittredge is a really hard place right now because there's only two classrooms.
Right.
So...
Per grade.
Per grade, so when you do...
It's a fifth grade.
Thank you. When you do that, right, you can't, when you add a third, it drops to fourteen.
Right.
When you keep two, it might be twenty-five, twenty-six. And that's even been a huge improvement of where we were several years back. I remember being in Katie Barnett's class a few years back and they were twenty-seven without any assistance. And I think she was, I think she was in first grade at the time.
She's a dynamite teacher.
Yeah. So.
She is.
But I also think the elementary, which would be the big group for this, they, I think they think that we're well on our way with this and this could be something sunsetting at the elementary level. I also think that the high school knows that they're in the NEAS process right now and that they're going to have recommendations and combinations as a result of that study. And...
They picked other issues.
Yeah.
I think it's interesting on, on this chart that the teachers are particularly interested in SEL.
Right.
And that the parents don't see that as big a need. But I, I love that, you know, just tonight you brought up this academic article that's showing that the SEL isn't going to affect all aspects of learning and community. So, we may, as parents, understand more and more, the more that we do with SEL, it may become more important to them over time. We can't, we can't really compare here, you know, and say that, like, this is more important to parents because we don't know who came to this survey for what purpose. You know, it's all voluntary. We don't have a hundred percent teachers. We don't have a hundred percent parents, so we can't really...
Yeah, I flooded the market everywhere to try to get everyone I could to do it.
Absolutely.
But what I would say is this with the SEL, Brian Gross used to have a line here. It'd say, give a mouse a crumb and they want a cookie. It's one of those things that, I think we're unique in North Andover under student services and the big push for inclusion. We understand if we don't attend to the social-emotional needs of our kids, that they're not going to do well academically. It's a big component of education today, so. And the work that we've been doing across all levels and the different tiered approaches, tier one, two, tier two and tier three, the programming, et cetera. And the continued work on that is really beneficial to teachers.
Yeah, and I, I read that as staff interest in working more on this, not as staff feeling like that we're inadequate in it.
Yeah, so let's get to the quotes. You know, so this is a really good representative one about what we need to work on. Obvious items, class size and infrastructure quality. We're making great progress, the new building, we still have a way to go. I think these remain the two biggest issues facing our community. I think that was pretty well represented. I think that, as you see, was a big piece from parents. You know, stability and leadership. You know, if I had a nickel for everyone that said, don't just try to do three years and pad your resume and hit the road. I mean, I am the ninth superintendent in fourteen years and the fourth in nine and a half. I mean, yeah.
But it's coming.
It was coming. And, you know, this was an interesting one. So we talk about special education, makes up about what, what Donna, about thirteen percent of our population in the district. Oh, sixteen, thanks. One of the things that they said, you know, that came through is, you know, we have some really dynamite programming, I think, in the elementary. You know, and the needs change over time. But for example, I think North Andover's always had a terrific elementary autism program. But when we get to middle school, trying to meet those needs with the programming for, not just autism, it could be anything, particularly around SEL behavior. It's, I think it's manageable in those smaller schools. I think that there's some things in place, you know, like therapeutic intervention program that's working. And then you get to the middle school and we have to be more systemic. And I think that's the work that student services has been doing, you know, the different programming now for behavior and therapeutic environment with a tier-two and-three program, where we used to just have one, which services a total of eighty kids right now in the least restrictive environment, you know, integrated to class as best they can, some is small support, some is much bigger in the tier-three. So that was an interesting one. You know, number four, I think that really was with staff. You know, we anticipated a change in, in a leadership model that we thought was going to work and we had some significant changes happen with that model. And as a result, you know, my predecessor and I talked about, well, I'm going to be long gone, so. So we worked saying, you know, how do you want to design this for next gen? I work with Donna. And we came up with a way I think that's working better, much better, and we have experts in special education running those particular areas. Would you say that's fair, Donna?
Yeah, I think, I think that's very fair. I think that we needed to get the right people in those seats that had an understanding of special education and how it works. And so we've moved forward and we've had some really good hires this year in that realm, so.
Consistent expectations about student behavior and how do we deal with that? You know, if the students do not meet those expectations. And then certainly, I'd say this was mostly for my focus group at the high school, talking just about, you know...
It's huge.
Yeah, you know, it's one of those things, like, we've added, you know, we've been working on elementary and elementary needed the most work. I mean, it really needed in terms of decreasing class size. The Medicaid money's been a game changer for us. It was the first time we've got to invest in new curriculum materials in almost a decade, updated and provide appropriate PD. And as I said in my goals earlier, our shared goals and my goals earlier this year, that this is like a needs assessment for the community. And really, the big work is going to be a lot of analysis this spring with the strategic plan and the spring bringing it to you guys like we do every year at the end of the year. But I also wanted to reserve the right to make a recommendation based on this need, you know, for the budget season as well. And, you know, as we look at this, you know, one of the pieces is, you know, if kids get into an AP class, we want to be able to service all those kids. I think, you know, this year was unique in the sense of it may not have been communicated as well of the process, number one. Because a lot, most, a lot of kids did end up getting into AP with the exception of a couple. And there's just some changing dynamics. We have a super-popular AP chemistry teacher now. And it seems to be drawing more interest towards that as well, which is a good thing. So, you know, that's something that came up. Helen was at the meeting with me and we talked about that extensively, so.
Well, we've done a tremendous amount of the new science curriculum, right?
Yep.
Which has actually piqued interest in all of that.
Right.
And so this is a great problem to have.
And improved preparation.
Yeah, so now kids are excited about math and science and want to take those in classes, or want to take those classes. And we have to make sure that we've got the seats for them.
Yeah, and not only the seats.
The expertise.
What's super exciting is, not only are we looking at this coming up, but the team at the high school has just made environmental an AP course, an AP offering with Charlie Anderson. So we're increasing, and we've increased a couple honest courses in science, too. So it's going to be pretty exciting. I just want to make sure I look at, if a kid can qualify for AP, great. And I also want to get to the day some point, get to the point someday here in North Andover that I want to expand AP to be available to as many kids as possible. And I tell you why. You know, for example, if we have AB Calc, we have, I mean, we must have one of the big, longest-running records in the Merrimack Valley. There's a lot of years we have twenty-five kids get fives.
Right.
So my thought is someday, and it's, it's not the top priority right now, because, you know, we have, we have to live within our constraints, but I'd love to see some college prep kids take those courses. If we can get all the other kids fives, then we should be able to get those, those students, I'd love to see them get a three or a four.
Right.
And lastly on there, SAT, high school science. Yeah, so communication between school and parents. So the sense I got from folks was this. You know, I was really looking at what we've done in the past, but I got a lot of positive feedback about central office communication with the newsletter, with some of the videos, and then I think I got a bump with these folks with, unfortunately, with the gas piece and communicating with them. They think that was good. The area that I think that we need to work on, and it's going to be something we work on as a leadership team with the principals, is some people feel really well-communicated with their school, but they don't feel this consistency. So you might have one school where there's a weekly newsletter that every parent gets and you might have another school where they feel like they get something once a month, if that. So, I think really setting an expectation because I feel like this is something that's come up in, you know, the last nine, ten years. I think it's a pretty common theme that keeps coming up. So I don't, I think it's something we can tackle pretty easily.
Right.
And it's not going to, it's not going to cost any money. And, you know, the, the really good ones, they take a, they write a weekly newsletter and then you know what they do with it? They put it on their front page of the website once a week and now they have an updated website as well.
Right.
So. Social and emotional well-being, talk more openly about this stuff and support the kids more. All right. Effective communication. Jim Millie's always saying that in every entry plan he's watched, communication always comes up as one because it's really fascinating in that sense that some people think it's really good and other people think it's not good. But in this case, effective communication is, you know, in school, do you feel well-communicated with my central office, principals, faculty, the north end of a school system? You know, and, and for the most part...
Students do not feel communicated.
I was just going to say, the students are saying no.
Yeah.
That may, I mean...
That's nineteen, only nineteen kids.
It's nineteen kids that may somewhat be appropriate, I mean, like...
They're the ones responding to the survey.
They are responding to the survey, right, but like, you don't necessarily send, you don't necessarily send emails out to the students, right?
Yeah.
It's done on Twitter.
Yeah.
The principals, you know, have their communication, so from you from the central office.
Yeah.
It's probably appropriate to a degree. What I do think is odd is forty percent of the teachers.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. And you'll see some representative quotes of that. It doesn't mean that it's, that doesn't mean that they're teachers, too. It could be teaching assistants.
Sure.
But it also, communication is a two-way situation. It could be that they don't feel like they're being heard. Not necessarily that they're not, they're not being communicated to, but they're not being heard what they're saying.
Not with staff, but you know, what we often find times with the email is... Not with staff, but you know, what we often find times with email is it's something that people don't really notice until they have to notice. So, um, so.
I would say with students, it might be that, especially it's email, and students aren't looking at email anymore. Like, that's very low. So it might be that, that there's different forms of communication, you know, as well with students.
Yeah, I think one of the things from my perspective is I'd like to kind of get it on a regular schedule with me and my kids.
It might help if you got a Snapchat account, let me just snap them.
There's only so many things I can monitor.
Do we, do we text though?
Yeah, teachers do.
No, I mean.
Right, they do the.
From, from central office, I mean, like even like the snowstorms or when you cancel school, I mean, getting the phone calls, you know.
It's tweeting.
It depends on what you do, so.
No, I mean, do, do we do a, obviously, there's a lot of utilities use text now to, to, uh, that thing. Do we, do we do that as a central office? That may be something that would increase, text is easier to read, digest real quickly.
Yeah, we send texts.
Do we?
I don't think I've ever got.
It all depends on your power school, uh, settings, I believe. I'm almost positive we send texts.
Should I, Mike, take a look at that? Because even if it was a link that brought you to the website or the Twitter account or something like that, like, just making it up, "School is canceled, click here for the superintendent's challenge for the day" or something like that.
Yep.
Because it comes out on Twitter before the robocall. I don't do Twitter.
Who's on, I'm not on Twitter.
I'm not either.
No, but every, but, but, but one of the things I've been telling all these people, you don't need to be on Twitter. Just go to the website and the front page.
That's what I do, yeah.
But again, that's a golden, my, my point is.
Have it come to us.
If you go to bed, this is next to them, you know, this is always near someone.
Yep.
Text would be the easiest and most probably effective way to reach people on.
Quickly.
I'll have to ask Mike.
And on a, not, not intrusively with the ring.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it, it's interesting, because talking to everybody, they have different feelings.
Right.
You know, I got a call on the two-hour delay saying, um, "I got a phone call, um, I got an email, um, I saw it on the news, uh, I saw it on Twitter, and I saw it on North End of the Moms," and it, and whatever the other mode was, whether I, it was the phone call or the email, they didn't get one.
Cell phone, right.
They're like, "Well, how did I not get this one?"
Too many, too many. I get the staff one and I get the parent one.
Yeah, so.
I'm assuming you guys get the same ones, so you get two.
I think I get the staff one.
I, I had an interesting conversation with him.
And is school, you don't get, you, you don't get a different one?
No.
I get two all the time.
Yeah, I'll check on the texts.
He's three, because they go to my home phone, too.
I thought we did texts, I'm on my.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
But you're right, the teachers text with all the kids.
Yeah, all I can say is, I, I don't think we can. I can tell you that, um, the positive feedback, like, people really appreciate the tweets and that, and that's, it spreads like wildfire.
Right.
Because there's only, as you're going to see in one of the quotes, this, people are sick of all the communication, some of them.
Yeah.
So.
Can't win.
You know, I did talk to that one individual.
Oh, is that pendulum sore?
It's just funny, I did talk to that one person, I said, you know, I think up in, I'm not sure, but I think up until about seventy-four, seventy-five here in North Andover, they had, um, fire whistles on the top of Davis and Furrow that they would, like, "Two equal, no school." This is not a joke, I mean, this wasn't that long ago, so.
Yeah, no, I remember that in childhood.
How long, how long the word, you think? You say it's not too long.
Seventies, seventies.
Seventies, yeah?
Early seventies. Yeah, yeah. I learned that from some folks at the senior center.
They would know.
So improved communication, communication is erratic. Some schools have tons and others are more erratic about it. That's what I talked about earlier. They want consistency. Dissemination of information through channels other than a midday PTO meeting. So what's really interesting is the people I talk to feel really well communicated with, for the most part, from central office, it's the school little niches and cliques and different things that people brought up the most. And I actually, I don't know if I have a quote in here, but there are some folks also that feel like they're on the outs with the PTO, like they're not, like, uh, they don't fit in, um, and they sometimes feel like that doesn't work. More transparency, um, livestream Facebook, well, that's something we did last month, Andrew Mailer and I, about the. We did the Bulldog announcement at the Bradstreet.
That was fun.
Yeah, really cool. And Hillary actually has a Facebook. It's not to comment on, but she provides information on, on, on Facebook, um, as well. More transparency, teachers want to have, um, they want to feel safe to give an opinion, came up quite a bit, and that was pretty representative. You know, there was, uh, possibly one school in particular, I think, that had more of that feeling than others, but it came up. Administrative decisions need to be more transparent, input from teachers about pending decisions. Weekly email updates, can't do robocalls.
That's a kid or school parent.
And there's been so much miscommunication in the last few years. Include all staff and staff meetings, TAs and service providers have to depend on classroom teacher to relay information that they deem important. And I think that's the one that we're, I think we've been working on it. But I think that the folks that don't feel well communicated when it says staff, I don't think it's the classroom teachers. Um, I think it's the.
The TAs.
The, the teaching assistants, all one hundred and forty-six of them. It's the, um, service providers, the OT, the PT, the people that might only be in a building for a little bit. Um, so I certainly think maybe there's a mechanism to improve that, uh, because the, I feel like the teachers feel well communicated with. Um, but I think there are other folks, and this is not a new issue, um, it's come up a long time. You know, particularly, um, you know, if we, if, if those people don't have their own school device. Which they don't, you know, some people need a school device to support students, uh, for example, teaching assistants. And Donna, how many teaching assistants do you think have school devices as a result of the necessary part of their job?
So what we've done is at the secondary level, high school and middle school, we've provided devices for those, um, TA's so that they can take notes and help the students with accessing, um, the information that they need. And then there's a much smaller number at the elementary level, because the work that they do is so different than the work they do at the secondary level. So really, it's secondary. So it's the elementary group that has the most difficulty with accessing any devices.
So David's point, if we had a text mechanism, communication, then they might feel more communicated. It seems like an easy, fixable problem.
It may, it may be.
That's interesting, because the next, the next question, number six, directly, you know, deals with that, with the email and all that jazz. And text is very small, but I'm not sure if that means the texts that they receive haven't been very helpful or that they don't want to receive text.
They haven't received them at all.
Yeah, I mean, text didn't come up as a mode necessarily. I, um, I think one of the discussions, particularly around communication to parents, I think schools, we have to have a more systemic way to get information out via schools. I think if it's going to be a snow day or something, I mean, there's so many mechanisms to look at. But I think the information in a school, uh, is something we want to peel the onion back a little bit more, because I think that's the important component. We can certainly look at text. Uh, a question about how decisions are made, do you feel that the current process of decision-making within the district is clear and transparent?
Staff said no on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, that's, sometimes that's hard to disaggregate, too, because, um, as you'll see from one of the quotes earlier, I don't know if I've shown it yet, they feel like teachers know, and then it depends on what they want to deem as important with.
Right, that's what you just read, yeah.
And I know it sounds silly, but I wonder, I mean, I'm thinking of some friends of ours, right? I mean, did they select that their parent, did they select that they're a staff member, right? Like, how, how did some of them get categorized in here, right? There isn't like.
Yeah, they had to select, yeah.
There isn't a teacher and, a, a staff and parent.
Yeah.
They take it, they could take it twice, though, right?
So, they, well, they could have taken it twice, but you know, that could, some of that, that staff representation could be in the parents'.
Yeah.
I bet it's staff.
Yeah, and, and, and the other piece is, you know, I think entry plans, you, I think everyone always learns every time, and I've seen a lot of them, so, um, in, in the future, you might want to break it down to instruction, teaching assistants and this, or other service provider, um, but it's a lot of different folks, and I wanted to categorize, um, that piece. It's often very similar to, we meet often with just the principals and the assistant superintendents. And then sometimes we have full leadership with everybody, and a lot of times what they know are from what the principal deems important to pass on. So sometimes we have to do a little catch-up, so there might be some ways to do that with them as well.
Yeah, I mean, I just think the bottom line on this one is that you can improve transparency.
Yeah.
You know, yep.
Yeah, absolutely. And I like transparency. So, as Jimmy Marina used to say, shine a light on it, so it's always good to do that. Uh, process is clear and inclusive as possible. Advance notice of decisions that will be coming up. Uh, tell me what the process for decision-making is, how can I give input myself, provide options for those who can't attend meetings, and distribute information in multiple ways. You know, um, I think Hillary's been a big help for us. But like I said, tonight's just the facts, um, I'm going to do a little bit more analysis of this. But, you know, guys, I'm a parent. I'm a parent of a fourteen-year-old, soon to be fifteen-year-old, and an eleven-year-old. And we're, we're both working parents with busy jobs. And at nighttime, I come home and I'm off in an Uber driver. I've got a half thing out. I've got baseball in Danvers. I've got to go then from baseball to basketball, and I don't know why they, he does both together. But my point being this, you know, we talked about this at the PTO presence the other day. Some of our best, um, uh, NAPRAN, the, the North End of Parent Resource Network, it used to be called the Speaker Series. Like, we've had experts from around the world, like, the biggest expert on bullying phones and all that, Dr. Englanda, was the most I ever counted in the auditorium for one of those, and it was fifty-three people. And a, a lot of them were couples, too, so it was really like.
Yeah.
You know, oftentimes, you know, this addiction thing's going to be big, and no matter how much we promote it, I think the reality of life today is that several parents are super busy, you know? I was watching, um, uh, I was talking to someone the other day about, you know, there's a lot of superintendent searches going on. And they said, "This is the most important decision the district has to make, but only, you know, eleven people showed up for this particular forum." So people are busy, and I understand that, so I think that's, you know, I think for us, trying to get it out with the nightly news, I think with the updates, I think with the journal segment, you know, and, and we post everything to the web. I actually found out from some of the PTO presidents that it is a place that people go. I, I didn't really believe that. I, I thought the web was kind of not something people went to, but the other day with the PTO presidents, that that's what they were all talking about, one of the first places they go.
At, at one point, it was a couple of years ago, we were kind of building up the web, but we were, um, kind of keeping track of, you know, where people are going and where they were.
Right.
And what places.
Mike can tell us that.
Were most common. And I don't know if Mike has those numbers, you know, at, at the ready, if Hillary would, but, um, you know, that. I, I hear people mention the website on a regular basis.
In a good way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Honestly, and, and it's updated, it's fresh, it's, it's been re-categorized a couple of times, um, over the past couple of years. I mean, I think it's the best it's ever been right now, which is, you know, absolutely fantastic, but, um, you know, it, it, everything is there.
Yep.
It really is.
And easy to find. I mean, it was, it was a challenge in the past.
It was very challenging in years past. But it, I mean, people are working now, and we are making it easier, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I don't want to respond to all of them, because these are, I really wanted to stick just to the findings. But what parents have told me is, like, um, oh, if I click on the presentation things, there's so much information about what you guys do, I can't get to meetings.
Right.
And those things. But they really liked the presentations and how we archive them. And the other biggest thing people tell me is they really liked learning from, I guess Twitter's starting to not be fun. It's not for young folks anymore here, but, um, they really liked that all the different principals and the different departments, like SEL, Student Services, that we have, it's right on the webpage, so those tweets are right there with information as well. And I found Twitter amazingly helpful during the GASP issue. Because oftentimes, I didn't, like, I don't want to contact folks saying, you know, "I don't have information," but I wanted to give updates that were a little less formal, that people could spread the word, um, until we got the information. And I found, uh, I got a lot of comments about how that was helpful, so. This came up, uh, a little bit, I think, um.
What one are you on?
Four.
Question four?
Do you mean, do you mean nine?
Oh, I was going to say, my question nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, question eight. Jim, did you skip over that?
No, I was just.
I wasn't sure, were you trying to rush your laundry?
Oh, no. So this is a really interesting one, because I've heard it both ways, but, you know, one of the sentiments was about principal coffees in the morning or PTO in the morning. How can working mothers and fathers attend all the parents regarding college application process we're held in the day? Very frustrating for working parents, creates a feeling of socioeconomic, socioeconomic exclusion. Offer a way for parents participating remotely in meetings. You know, so it's interesting, I have some ideas around that. I think that, I think that CAM is probably our biggest untapped resource. And I think the ability to, once it settles back into its organization, you know, there was some changes and things that I guess this fall that have come back.
Do a webinar?
Not even a webinar, I think that principals could do one minute on, hey, this is what's happening, like, you know, and you just post it to the web and let everyone know that's where it is. So.
I was thinking for those meetings, though, for some meetings, or principal coffees or something.
Yeah. And I think the other component to it is, I also talked to, I, I, you know, one day I did a little walking meeting with Andrew, and it's not something uncommon that I go meet with someone at their house or walk around. Like, there's a lot of people, too, that work second and third shift, they don't like, they, they, they prefer the day, you know, and some of the lower socioeconomic, so it's, um, you know, North End has a lot of different, um, socioeconomic folks. If the decisions, uh, if their decisions being made don't leave, uh, to be announced solely by the PTO, the PTO page. I did get one recommendation, it was the only one, a mom at the high school ad thinks that I should get on North End of the Moms and monitor it. And then they, the other mothers told me that if I want to stay married, that I should definitely not do that. You were there, Helen, you remember that one?
I was there.
Uh, North End has become increasingly diverse over the last decade. A major portion of our plan is focused on needs of all students, high need students. What have they seen to address this within schools? And, you know, uh, Building Respectful Communities Group really got reinvigorated with the change in leadership. Chet Jackson and I stepped down after like running it for about six years co-chair. You know, and Nikki runs it now with Deb Holman. And it really became a lot more inclusive, particularly of, um, you know, some of the, a lot of the religious factors in towns. I think this folks, Protestant churches, representatives from all over. And we, we got to start to bring in the young blood. We often forget that, um, and then we get some young blood in the BRC. We often forget, like, I think of parents that are new, and I'm just like, "Been here," and then I realize, oh, they got a junior, and then they're going to be gone forever. You know, so I think if there's a way to engage, um, other folks in some of this, too, like, I think that the new folks in the BRC have really re-energized it, what I've been told.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of parents came to, to the early meetings when, um, when the leadership just changed. Not, not that the old leadership wasn't, it's just, you know, when you make something new again, new people feel like they can come.
I think the other thing, too, that's been pretty remarkable is the, um, understanding our differences. Empathy is probably the hardest thing in RACE to teach. It's become really difficult for kids to grasp, and I think understanding our differences has been pretty remarkable, and that's come up quite a bit. And you know, this year, we went to, um, we put a ad out for a stipend, um, which two people split, Heidi Waters and Maria Ryan. And it's really minimal, it's twenty-five hundred bucks apiece. But what I would say is, uh, it's just a token of appreciation, because it is, I mean, Holly, how much work is it?
It's a lot of work to coordinate it. But volunteering's not a lot of work.
Volunteering's great.
Yeah.
So then you get to the quotes, uh, RACE has been a decision, uh, it's been, you know, RACE comes up again, understanding our difference. It's been an effective way in improving tolerance and empathy with students with diverse needs. And that really speaks to the changing, um, I wouldn't say we're rapidly changing demographic anymore. I think we're pretty much, it seems like we've kind of settled in. But as you guys know, and I've told you before, I think we have about twenty-seven different languages in this community. Last year, twenty-five kids who graduated from North End High School graduated from twenty-five different foreign countries. And I think more importantly, um, the range of socioeconomic status here in North Andover, it's huge. It's a big range.
I, I also think it's interesting about the whole, um, adding Nikki Murphy's position and adding that social emotional learning. We were kind of ahead of the curve on that. We've seen on our school committee listserv that we're, it's in the last six months, people are like, "Oh, we're exploring this. Does anybody know anything about this? Like, do we need to do this?" And it's getting on people's radar, and the fact that we're already underway is pretty exciting. exciting.
I mean, it's, it's honestly...
Oh, sorry.
You know, I would never want a principal to do this today, but when I was principal at Thompson School, I eliminated a half an hour of academics to put in responsive classroom, trained everyone from the custodians to anyone that worked in the building to run morning meetings with kids, and it set the day off. So I lost a half hour of that, but there's studies out of the University of Chicago, out of Syracuse, like, we're talking, with no change in curriculum, it can increase standardized test scores by almost nineteen percent.
My daycare did that, too.
And I think that, you know, in the sense of, it's no longer just about, and I don't believe, I think most of our teachers are there, it's no longer just about teaching, it's about learning. And it's also about, we've gotta teach folks a lot of things besides English and math. We have to teach particularly to the younger ones how to interact, how to address people, how to look folks in the eye. I mean, we work on all sorts of skills, how to go to recess, how do you behave in lunch? You know, and it's...
Self-regulation, self-awareness, social skills, it's just so many things.
Yeah. I mean, I actually have to say, I think, you know, I went to a celebration for one of the noon attendants at Thompson, she's still there, I almost called it a retirement party, she's ninety, Shirley Kern.
She's awesome.
And I, they asked me to do a little speech, and I was saying, noon attendants are probably the lowest-paid folks in our entire district, but they are disciplinarians, they're psychologists, they're coaches, they're teachers, they're advocates, they're, I mean, what they do every day.
Thermos openers.
Yeah, thermos openers. So, social-emotional, you're right up there. You know, for whatever's causing it, and I'm not sure, I was talking about this with Andrew before the meeting, you know, it's a complex world, and I don't think there's one thing, you know, there's a lot of folks out there say it's the computers, you know, it's the phones. Other folks say it's the fast pace, other folks, I mean, there's a whole bunch of reasons, but there's definitely, and I don't think anyone can necessarily, you know, say exactly what it is, because I think it's multifaceted, but there's more issues with anxiety and depression and other issues in school. And I think having the SEL director buttoning up tier three last year, working really hard with tier two this year, like, you know, the support staff getting them with best practices. And she's not really supposed to get to tier one, but she's been getting to tier one for about a year now, she's pretty much a dynamo, helping teachers with those strategies. And then I even had a few parents comment, like, on the SEL website.
It's a fantastic website.
Some moms said, "I thought it was a little cheesy, but then I started to follow it, like, what do I do when?" You know, and it says, "Try this," and it works. So, really cool. Suggestions about how we better address the needs? More opportunities for students to excel in the low grades. Challenge high achievers in middle school. Do not offer enough levels at the high school. SEL program continues to outpace the resources we are putting into it. Our minority population often feels isolated, in some cases act out with poor behavior because of it. Special education, feedback from parents, you know, and I think a lot of that goes back to, we had really such a change in that model, that was really significant. So, there were new people hired than mid-year departures, mid-year additions. ELL support, you know, I think really with ELL support, that's something on our strategic plan, it's something that we have a plan for, but it's multi-purposed, multi-year. You guys know this year will raise the pay from twenty-nine to thirty-two, next year thirty-three, next year thirty-four. And probably in 2020, when the current one teacher, I think, is looking at possibly retirement, I think we have to reorganize and look at what Kristen and Lorene recommend, and, you know, probably go more of a teacher model, which is important. The reason I say it's important is I think, most of our kids test out of EL by the time they get to middle school. In the middle school and high school, numbers are smaller, they're typically move-ins. But we have schools that traditionally haven't had EL students, that are showing up in schools that haven't typically had them.
Interesting.
So we need more PD, we need more training. And the good news is Kristen Ando just became a state, she's always been a state-certified trainer, we got approval for our district, so she can for free run those classes.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah. So it's hard, I mean, if someone shows up, I mean, typically if someone shows up, they don't speak any English, you know, we had a lot of experience with particularly at the Thompson and Atkinson with that. We put them in class for two weeks before we do anything, so they can get routines done, like, young kids pick up language quick, then we start the intervention. But if you're in a school, Lorene and I talked about this one day, if you're in a school that's never had any EL student, and you haven't had the training because you haven't had to have the training, because you didn't get flagged by the state, it's really hard to think about, well, what resources do we need and how do we deal with it?
Some of the laws have changed, too, and so we've been working with our EL staff, as well as some of our general ed staff, looking at servicing students in a little bit of a different way, too, so we've already started to make some shifts.
You know, I can't get over last year at graduation, that we had a student that had moved here, who hadn't even been in school, didn't speak English, hadn't even been in school in his country of origin, and came to North Andover High School, was very successful. I mean, that was just so stunning.
Yeah. I mean, even older kids, I'll give you one example, and I don't want to get sidetracked, because Holly said this might happen.
That ship has sailed.
I was teaching freshman in high school history a long time ago, and I get a kid who came here to Shrin, he had, came to Shrin as he had polio from Vietnam, and he had to have a big surgery, and the Shriners paid him from the Boston half-time. They put him in my class. He's like, oh, wow, wow, I mean, this was before, you know, we even talked about EL in schools, really. And he was with me for six months. And the first week, he just listened, second week, he tried to take the notes on the board even though he didn't know what those meant. The third week, he was picking up some of the language. In fact, at the fifth month, we could have a conversation like this, I would have to talk a little slower. His name was Min Lam, and it was just remarkable that a kid was fifteen, that could pick up a language. I mean, he had to learn everything. He was from a part of Vietnam where, if you get a chicken, you go get a chicken, pluck every feather, like, he couldn't understand supermarkets when he first got here, or how any of that works, it was really fascinating. And he loved McDonald's.
Not Wendy's?
Not Wendy's. One new program, you know, additional, more variety of extracurricula, that came up with the, what's the AN twenty-three, for the all responses, the all responses, okay. SEL support gifted on his program, expand band of music, additional STEM, reduce class size, expand community programs.
Wow, the additional SEL support is overwhelming for the staff.
Yeah, it's one, like I said, I think that it's really been eye-opening to them of how it works and how we do this, because this is, you know, in most districts, is it about almost half kids that are placed out, typically a behavior or a social-emotional learning issue.
Yep.
And...
It was here when I arrived here, which is why I, in my analysis, felt the greatest need was to find a director of SEL and really started implementing those programs and that professional development. We were fifty percent of our out-of-district kids.
Yeah, and...
There was over a hundred kids that were out at that time.
I mean, I, I think we're ahead of the curve, because it's really a difficult thing, but as we add programming, and as we're gonna talk about in a little bit, it sometimes takes a little time to pay off, but if we don't do it, we just, it's not sustainable.
Right.
And teachers are really, like, as teachers have learned more about EL, they've learned more about Lucy Khan, they also want to learn more about strategies in the classroom. So, and we've done a ton of PD on it, and we're gonna continue and continue to build capacity. The kids coming out from college now have a little bit more training in this stuff, too, which is interesting.
Makes sense.
And so if you go to those representative quotes, dedicated faculty members, social-emotional learning needs of students, Sarah Ward to present to teachers. Unfortunately, anytime I bring up her strategies with teachers, they have absolutely no idea of what I'm talking about, you know, so...
So the good news is we're bringing her back again in March.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Yep, Lorene and I have been working together on PD, and she'll be back, and we're planning to do a parent seminary thing as well.
That's terrific.
You know, the next one is outreach, you know, and I think that goes really, certainly, I always want to do more for those, those groups, because I think that's, you know, the core of who we are, and as a district, and the values that we have. But I also think that's about communication, too, because we, you know, we have been doing some literacy stuff through Cradle Lawrence Action Council at Woodridge, we have been doing some things. I wish Royal Crest was more cooperative, they got some new management, and they wouldn't have us back. Extracurricular activities like Pet Day, International Historic Events, more language like Chinese, Korean, Spanish, French, had come up. Pet Day, there are...
Yeah.
Well, no, there's some, there's some interest in passing, I'll mention it, just in passing. You know, there's been some interest by some parents and the teacher around the therapy dog, so, something we're looking at. There's a lot, I have a lot of questions about it, how that works. Challenge the top students at elementary, math extension run by parents, what about high readers, others passionate about social studies? Challenge bright minds. Elementary schools' lack of technology in science. You know, I do think that, you know, as we continue to roll out science now from the middle school, they're working at the high school, and we continue to roll it out now with the elementary and the strategic plan. And I think in most of our elementaries, I think we're almost, for example, we have the model classroom, but I think we're almost two to one for devices. Does that sound about right for Mike? Off the top of my head? Classes are too large, music lessons starting at fourth at each school. I think that they must be talking about instruments there, we have music.
They are.
Other than...
Hot cross buns.
Hot buns.
Yeah.
There's nothing better.
It's sound, I mean, when my son tells...
Please tell me how it sounds.
Last slide.
Community programs.
Not yet.
It's fun to talk about these things, but honestly, like, I really value this input, and I didn't want to sugarcoat it, you know, so I did pick some representative quotes. It doesn't mean, you know, that that's everybody, but I wanted to highlight, you know, some of the different percentages. So the quotes aren't certainly weighted, but I think it's important to hear all views, and we go from there. Community programs has some gaps in programming. You know, that's an interesting one, because it's, I heard from a lot of people, like, we have the most amazing community programs and the offerings, and then other people said that they don't know, so I, you know, that there's, we need to add more to community programs, so...
Can I say all the time, I remember when it was barely filled, one side of eight-and-a-half by eleven.
Agreed.
I mean, it is now phenomenal. I mean, the things and the variety that they offer is exceptional.
Yeah, I, I'm very curious about the suggestion that we have more varied extracurricular, because...
We might have the most in...
I don't, I don't, it would be, it will be interesting to find out what people mean by that at some point, because I just feel like we have a tremendous number of extracurricular opportunities at all levels, really.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I just think the, the work across schools and the band going to, you know, jazz band to basketball, the band doing the Veterans Day celebration, and taps and all that, you know, the being at the senior center. I think, you know, if we ever wanted to make money, I think we could rent out our jazz band, some of the different weddings and stuff. They are so amazing. Same with the singers, same with all the different activities, I mean, it's really remarkable. But it was really nice, like, going to the Super Bowl, it was really nice, I got to go down on the field for a little bit, and it was really nice to see, not just our football players playing, but the band got to play on halftime at Gillette, like, so that was really cool. The cheerleaders were like, and, you know, Seventh Heaven, just being down there, I mean, it was really exciting for all of them. So, and then I asked for advice, I had to leave some out, legal reasons. I, you know, it really, it hasn't been really like, you know, anything in the past couple of years with superintendents, but a few of them went way back, and they had...
Back by the back.
Back to Harvard, anyway. So, they had some advice, but I didn't put those in. I just think, you know, people said, "Continue to do what you're doing to service and communicate with our traditionally marginalized families." Number two, they, they're really looking for some stability and leadership. You know, and I put that in as a revolving quote, quote, I mean, representative quote, and my coach said, you know, "That's a really good quote, but it sounds like you're saying, oh, better keep you around for a long time," and not at all, this is what people said. "Continue to listen and be approachable," and this one came up a lot. People said that they like my core values, but, and doing always what's best for kids, and don't cave to North Andover politics.
I mean, just know what that exactly means.
I was thinking that, too.
I like number two a lot. I think two's huge for me personally, as a group member and as a parent.
You know, I think two probably, two, I think is representative, I remember from a teacher, and it's just a start, stop, start, stop.
Absolutely.
And I think the frustration is, you know, it's everyone, I, I think what, the strength we have now is we have a strategic plan that's just about up in a lot of areas that will sunset, and we have opportunity to take this data and work really hard all spring to see. I don't know if the objectives will change, but I can certainly see the initiatives under those three objectives changing. And the teachers feel really kind of worn out a little bit with, we're gonna do this, and then it changes. But I think, you know, one of the strengths we have is not me as superintendent, it's really the team. And, you know, the addition of Kristen Ando, I think's been huge, Lorene new, and Donna and Jim. So I think the strength of our team is, really has the ability to, A, keep us on track with the strategic plan, which is tremendous, because we can say, "This is our plan, this is what we're gonna carry out, we cannot do everything at once, but let's be strategic." These, these are the major findings. So the big ideas that came up were, A, the class size, and stability and leadership, and special education came up. One of the things I noticed about special education wasn't always necessarily about direct services to kids, from teacher to kid. A lot of things that had come up was around, you know, fresh in people's mind, I think, was that, that change, you know, I think we had five last-minute resignations, Donna. One?
Yes, the change for, at the elementary level, when that was pushed through and pushed through so quickly, that it really didn't sit well with some of the people that were sitting there already, and so they left, and so then we hired some new people, and so we're moving forward now with making those changes again to what it had been, that had been successful.
Yeah, it seemed like they felt that the communication got muddied with the changes, and then, and even with the changes, and there was like even a media resignation, and that we were screaming, "Want to do something else," so, you know...
But I do want to do a shout-out to our programs, we have some fabulous vertically-aligned autism programs, we're developing SEL programs, and really the inclusion services that our teachers are providing are really outstanding, so our kids are making good progress.
Great. All right, moving on to our budget status report.
Thank you.
Thank you to the moving on.
No, no, no.
No, that was good, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna do this a little differently than usual, because we do have, for the same reasons we've been highlighting the out-of-district, unanticipated expenses, and the opening of a new school, putting pressure on our budgets, we are projecting a deficit at this time, and I'm gonna go over why we are experiencing that and what the amount is. So what I'm gonna do is show you a couple of different models, one being where we were in May, and what we would have if we had continued along that track, where we would be. So, at that point, Donna and I, and members of her office and mine, meet and put down who are the out-of-district students, what are the services they're getting, what's the tuition cost, add it all up, and project the cost of out-of-district. So when we did that in May, it was four million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, assuming, and they send out C annually, they're gonna go up two percent or three percent, and so we factor that in. That left us with what was in the budget, about five hundred thousand dollars heading into the fiscal year. When I notified Dr. Price of that, she saw it as an opportunity to add some programs that we hadn't been able to add in the budget process, but now felt that we could. This is showing if we hadn't added those programs, we would have, because our actuals, as you can see, based on mostly four new students that we, we got after that point, and now have... have out-of-district, and one student that was in out-of-district, but now has become a residential, and it's an increase of 170 for that one particular student. You can see that our actual is at $5,070,000, so we would have had $43,000 of a surplus if we hadn't added the programs. Going down and looking at the impact of the opening of the new school, you can see that we had, and this is the number that you will remember from our budget discussions last year, all of the positions that we added were directly for the new school, and that totaled $399,312. We also anticipated FFNE, furniture, fixtures and equipment, expenses of $100,000, for a total of $499,312. Our actual additions of staff, including the extra hours that we've had to put in, in order to keep the school running, is projected to be $554,000. The additional construction cost, as David can attest, there, and in all honesty, the, the cost of the construction was slated at, we had $6.4 million, and the total came in at $6,430,000. And so we had to come up with that plus the extra cost of the renovation. But $30,000 over a $6.4 million project is not unusual at all. That's actually very good. It's less than, less than 1%. But we ant, and we anticipated that.
But just to make clear, so, the actual additions and the staff and the extra hours, 554, so I know that that number of the, of the additional hours, staff, et cetera, added, is added to the total cost of new staff for the building that we planned on, but what's the, what is it again?
Right, the delta is about $150,000.
Okay.
Yep.
Between 399, 312, and 554.
554 and 399.
Right.
Yep, I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, because it looks like we added a half a million dollars.
Right.
Yeah, there was 150 in unanticipated staff cost.
Yes.
Right, and, right. So, up on top of the projected, and these are the actuals. And so, the additional construction costs of what I've added here, that included the kitchen renovation, the renovation of the existing ECC, some security that we've done, and some parking that was added. The FFNE came in at 123,905, so an additional 23,905, and then we added an extra bus as well, for a total of 803,653, which would be a deficit of 304,341. We did, though, have some money committed to us by the town manager of 100,000 towards FFNE. He, in discussions we had early in the year, said, "Go ahead and get the extra bus to help us out," so he committed the 50,000 to cover that. As you guys know, we annually have, from community programs, we charge them for the uses of space for the programs that you guys have talked about, for utilities and the wear and tear on the buildings, to the tune of $60,000. And then, from food services, they contribute towards the new attendant time for monitoring inside the building during the lunch, and that's 40,000. So that's 100,000 that we annually are able to offset unanticipated expenses with. And then the revolving, the ECC revolving account, we anticipated contributing toward the renovation using that. So that deficit drops down to 29,341, and offset by what had been above of a surplus of 43. We were a project, we would have been projecting to finish level for the year. But what happened was, oh, and one more thing, I keep forgetting to point this out as I review this, that did not require any use of the...
Stabilization fund.
Stabilization fund, correct. But in putting in those two programs, which totaled 323,165, what that did is reduced our contingency going into the year from 505 down to 182, which now means we would have, we have a deficit in out-of-district of 279,000, and we have to tap into the stabilization fund for the maximum that we can of 250,000. That leaves us a deficit there of 29,000, and then, now we have nothing to offset the, the new school, and we have an additional 323,000 expenditure that we weren't anticipating, so that the total deficit for this year is 382,106. And so we have reviewed this with the town manager. He has agreed to work with us and figure out how to address this, and we'll continue to look at other possibilities within our own budget to address it as well. But I want to make you guys aware of it.
And so, we are tapping into the stabilization fund for 250. We have not tapped in, we did not tap into it last year, but have we tapped into it before? Was it only for like 100?
No, no, we tapped into it.
Two years ago, we tapped into it for 150? Was it 150?
115, 200. So we did two years in a row, and then we did not last year.
Okay. I don't think I remember two, what, the two in a row here, this was three years ago.
And so what impact does that have on the, the budget? Fortunately, if you look at, and this is what we're, the draft of the FY20 budget is, it's going to look, most likely when it's presented on third. If you look, and you probably remember that most years, we, our level services cost us about 3%, leaving us, depending on what the percentage increase is, the delta between that and 3%. We're fortunate, because those who participated in the teaching negotiations, probably remember the scattergram, that most of our teachers are at the top step, in whatever column they are. And so that means that they're not getting a step increase and a percentage increase, they're only getting the percentage increase, which this coming year is 2%. So that really impacts our level services cost. It brings us to about 2.5, it's 2.4 something. And so, the programs I just talked about, by including those, and you can see I've said without programs and with programs, and the bus, the added bus, that, if we count that as level services, it's costing us 3.1%, which leaves us the normal amount, or the delta between whatever we get, whether it's 3.75 or 4% and 3.1%. And so, some of the proposed additions the superintendent will be speaking to when we do the budget presentation. Right now, they're totaling 370,800. So, if, in this scenario, if we got 3.75%, we would come up short of those additions by 53,000. If we get 4%, we would actually have a little extra of $68,000.
Before questions, can I just speak to a little bit of budget development?
Go right ahead.
So, it goes to it. So, Jim, that's a really good presentation. You know, ultimately, the ABEC costs us more than we thought, some unanticipated costs, and then the special education particularly move-ins with the addition of the two programs, as Jim said. So going forward, what's impacting us this year is also, it's impacting us for next year as well, as we develop the budget with level services. Some of the overages at the AV ECC will be one-time costs.
Right.
Others will be recurring costs, in terms of staffing and the bus that Andrew Mailer so graciously has agreed to help us with. You know, so that's getting picked up this year, but now that bus will be taken into the operating budget, because we need it to run the routes. We can't run the routes appropriately without it. So that's good. Additionally, the two special education programs that were added was with the belief that we will benefit from the savings. I do believe that we will benefit from the savings, we just haven't realized them yet. And we're in a serious analysis of that at this point, because, you know, if we ever consider, for example, only having one of the new two programs, the issue becomes, A, is we want to recruit people back, and folks in all communities never want to come back to a program that's new, because they don't want to be the test folks. You know, but more importantly, you know, although it wasn't what was anticipated last spring, you know, I think we really need to look at that, because there is a need. And, you know, just a couple out-of-district placements can really make the difference. And we do know, we have some preliminary analysis from Donna and from the principals. We do know we have some kids with early intervention coming into preschool, they're gonna be up sooner rather than later. And we also know that, you know, we have kids move in with, you know, you've seen what the cost of the move-ins for out-of-district are. We also have kids move in that need programming that we can provide as well. So, I think the most important piece is, for you to know, is this. We've worked really hard this year. Any student that started on day one, the day after Labor Day here in North Andover Public Schools, in all of our schools, we have not sent one kid to out-of-district that started on day one in this district. I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the work. Donna's done, I'm proud of the work. The principal's done, and meeting the needs. Although we haven't realized the, the cost benefits or savings of the new programs, I do think we need time to analyze those. At the same time, what Jim and I and the team have worked really hard on, the principal's and whoever else, is going line by line. I mean, we've been doing this for some time now. And rather than, for example, you know, we added four positions this year with turnover savings. That's a one-year appointment, you know, that we just can't continue to carry over some of the appointments that we make year after year. Would you say that's fair, Jim?
That's definitely fair.
Yeah, and we've also identified some, you know, some other positions that we have to look at that may be, you know, equally long-term subs, et cetera, but they're costing us another $154,000. So I think, you know, really, we have to make the recommendations, even if it's not as much as we thought it was going to be, in the spirit of the directives and the strategic plan. All while, I think, you know, it's also a really good time to conduct an analysis of all of our staffing, efficiencies, what's best, distribution, programming, and the like, so. But I, I would say that Jim and I met with Andrew today. I'm really appreciative to have such a thoughtful, smart, innovative, creative, strategic partner, and I look forward to, you know, moving past this year, and I'm looking forward to, you know, the strategic plan expanding, and continuing to meet those goals.
So, I think one of the challenges with this, of course, is, you know, I forget exactly where it is, but think, well, it's actually under each of the schools. All of the salaries, I mean, those are set, the fixed costs, oh, oh, sorry, I'm, I'm in the next one here. But, you know, when we think about where we are with everything, I mean, salaries, all those things are certainly set and fixed. You know, when we look at what we've already had to spend money on, you know, it's, it's most of the things that are startup costs for us, right, for the year, right? So we've had to do curriculum and things of that nature. And then the other things that kind of, you know, move along at a staggered pace are things like utilities and, you know, costs, et cetera. So, when we start to look at, you know, where we can look at this budget, I mean, like, how do we, I mean, is this all the leadership team that is really kind of sitting together and kind of running through? Okay.
You know, I think that the point I made about, you know, we're not sending any kids out, I think's really important. I think it's also important, you know, that although we anticipate particular things with the addition of programs, it's really tough, because eliminating them puts us at a real risk, because they have growing pains. They, new programs always have growing pains.
Sure.
We're experiencing that now, but on top of that, you know, you talk about no cushion. So, what we thought might be one thing, when you don't have the cushion, and then you get two move-ins that are $311,000. You have two kids that are in our district, and like a $250,000 placement, that then turns to 400 for one and 300 for the other. Then when you talk about all these different components, you know, so we've kept people in who have been here, but now you have move-ins, I mean, out-of-district placements that move into North Andover. And I think Jim explained it the best with, you know, the cushion, the explanation, the programming. So it's a really fine balance. But I think the ability for us to look at what we have, what we move forward, because I do think, you know, there are certain needs that I think we need to address. And I think that I'm much more optimistic with the work of the leadership team, with the work of Jim. I mean, we, we did a protocol that was very extensive around desirable for improvement, essential cost-saving measures. So we're, we're looking at everything. I think with that work, I think we're gonna get through with the recommendations. But I also do think that this spring, that we're gonna have working committees to look at several things, to think how we best operate, what's best it is.
One of the things that we've talked about, too, is that a common request from the FinCom over the years has been a longer-term plan. So one of the things we've talked about out of necessity, this year especially, is putting together a three, four-year plan to implement some of the things that you may have hoped happened in one or two years, but makes more sense to have them be three or four years. So we'll be coming forward with that as well.
Yeah. So some of the things, like, for example, it happened with one of the strategic plans two years ago, maybe. We really wanted to tackle EL that year, and it didn't happen. It had to become more of a stage plan all the time.
Does Circuit Breaker play into this at all?
Donna, Jim?
Well, it's consistent. We know what that number is, and so it's already factored in. There's, there's often, at the end of the year, a small bump to every community, usually 30 or 40,000. Can't count on it, but that would help if it happens, as it usually does.
We've also worked with some of the budget items, Jim and I, with regard to my understanding of how Circuit Breaker works, and us working together to reshuffle how and where we're paying for things to increase what we're getting back from Circuit Breaker. So that's been good the last couple of years.
Right, and one of the other things that we have a little bit of flexibility this year on is the 240 grant, and what we can charge that, because we haven't, we've been moving a lot of things for, that we've been paying for specialist contracted services, and some of these programs and some of the staff that we've hired are doing those services. So we've got money, some money available in the grant as well. It's just waiting to see how that shakes out. That will help impact the bottom line as well.
And the 240, for those viewing at home that don't own its special education.
Great, yeah.
And I also think, you know, thinking creatively as well, I think that oftentimes we, in the middle of the year, we propose a budget, and that's true, that's the way the cycle works. But I also think sometimes that things may come up, and then maybe beneficial occasionally, as Jim talks, with half cushion, so that we can apply that when it's needed based on a need. Still, we're trying to meet the needs of what we said we're gonna do in the strategic.
So, and then one other thing is the, you'll see, you know how we come with, to you at the end of the year to increase community programs, because their revenue increased and so did their expenses. Well, if you recall, when Mary Lou added programming and changed some classes, that increased the revenue, the revenue that's been coming in the last couple of years for the revolving account for preschool. So there was some funds in there that will help offset this as well. So we'll be coming closer to the end of the year to request additional spending out of that account that will help with this as well.
Given that we have a deficit now, and we're trying to figure out next year's budget, will we be able to build a cushion next year?
Well, it's always a que, I mean, in all honesty, Holly, I try to get a cushion in every year, and it, it's not the priority over adding this position or that position. So, it's a huge challenge. I would love it if we could. I mean, I thought we had one to start the year.
Yeah, and I just think that the, sometimes what may look, you know, you go through the budget process, and then sometimes, you know, it was a really good idea late in the year to think about additional programming. But at the same time, you know, we have to be really careful. But at the same time, you know, we have to be really careful about how we think about that additional program. Because sometimes those things take a little while to, you know, come to fruition in terms of savings and, not only savings, but what's best for our kids. And success for students.
And if anything, the inconsistency of out of district has been consistent. And that it goes like that.
We've had some anomalies, unexpected anomalies, that some of them are short-term, but unfortunately, they impact this year.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. New business. First reading of student council trip to Hyannis. To the mask conference.
This is the same format every single year, they go to the same conference, right? Okay.
No questions? All right, excellent. First reading of the high school baseball trip to Cooperstown.
I would just comment that I couldn't open some of these PDFs that were attached.
If you click on it, request.
Yeah, right.
That does it instantly. But yeah, I had, I had the same thing.
So is, so if the public is looking at this, can they also do the same thing?
I think so.
If there was an issue, which occasionally can come up because it, sometimes she changes from, I believe, Bev, from edit to view only. I know that that's caused problems for me. So I can make sure tomorrow that if any of these links had an issue with that, she can certainly make an appeal tomorrow.
It was the one, the Meredith Tracy PDF, which I, she gave me because I asked for it.
Yeah, yeah, if you request it comes up. But I wasn't sure if there were limits on that.
No, typically you don't have to request. But oftentimes we're in meetings and we think we're shit with everybody.
It's a thing that came from Meredith Tracy and she would have to share it. And that's part of the problem. I think, I'm not positive, but I think so.
No questions? And we have a first reading and request to suspend rules to approve an overnight trip to Disney for the high school football coach and one player. And Dr. Gillen, I know you wanted to present something on behalf of Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, so I think just a couple of things. I want to read, Chet wrote something for me today because a lot of this information had come in pretty quickly. Thirty-two coaches in the entire United States of America have been selected to attend the Pro Bowl and recognized by the NFL for excellence in athletics. Additionally, this is the first year that they've been able to invite a student to go. And I know that the process for looking at a student, talking to Mr. Jackson and Coach briefly, you know, they talked to the captains, but due to the commitment to other sports, there was, Mr. Slattery was the one available, so. And being the first year, let me read this and then I have some additional information I want to share. As principal, Principal Jackson, as principal, I'm advocating for Ryan Slattery to be considered for this unique field trip opportunity as defined in our school committee policy manual. Field trips can bring the school and community closer together, which can result in real-life experiences that enrich the curriculum for students and also bring about better public relations. Ryan would be considered on a field trip for the school as part of a co-curricular football program with Coach Dubzinski, with chaperone. The trip will allow him to collaborate with other recognized student athletes and leaders from all across the United States that were assigned by this specific coach. As a two-sport captain, Ryan will have the opportunity to represent North Andover High and the town of North Andover in athletic skills competition, a flag football game, which connects to our PE and wellness curriculum in Orlando at the Wide World of Sports complex. I haven't heard of the Wide World of Sports since it used to be on Saturdays on the ABC.
The agony of defeat.
Thrill of victory, too.
He will also participate in a diverse experience of plays from across the country that allow him to learn and grow as a student as he prepares to transition to St. Anselms. I believe the trip will better prepare him for the transition to college with stu-, and particularly, he's going to play college across with different student athletes from across the country. As other building approved, overnight trips have gone to the school committee. I have received feedback to be sensitive to the costs that the family would incur on the trip. This opportunity would allow Ryan's parents to not incur additional costs to supervise Ryan during this opportunity, so.
Is that because he goes with the coach?
Yeah, so a couple of things. And like I said, this happened really quickly. As a result, North Andover, the NFL is going to make a $2,000 donation that they'll have to bring to the school committee for athletics, for athletics program. It also puts him in a selection to possibly win, I think it's a $10,000 donation as well. But, oh, additionally, Chet had some other things. Ryan and Coach Dubzinski will also be able to observe NFL football experiences shown in the attachments. They should both be able to reflect from the experience and bring back information about a certain school and the athletic programs. I have no doubt that they will represent us with pride and class. The public relations will only continue to be positive for the school and community. So the information, so I gathered a little information myself. So if his parents were going, they'd have to incur the costs, but then I wouldn't be bringing this as a field trip for the school. They'd simply excuse him for the days he was out. That being said, in the ability to not incur the costs, the parents would like him to go with Coach Dubzinski. So on advice of Town Council, we met and discussed. She thinks it's very appropriate for us to field trip for, for this trip. And the other things I know about it, so if his parents went, they'd incur the cost of flight, hotel, et cetera. I also know that Coach Dubzinski will be traveling not only with Mr. Slattery, but family as well, including another teacher in our district. Now, they won't be, you know, those folks, if they miss a day of school, will have to use this, you know, personal day. That being said, that, two things. One is the student athlete is going to have the ability to stay in an adjoining room from the coach at the hotel with, he'll be bunked up with a player from another state, another region, different culture, which is really cool. The, I think the other thing that's kind of cool is, for a lot of our kids, you guys know we talk about all the different trips. And so whether it's Deca tied to business or athletic competition, two of them tied to wellness, PE, competitive sports class. He's going to be with 32 other kids from all different regions of the United States. And last, but not least, the NFL picks up the cost for the coach and the player. So that's, I think the key component was not to burden his parents. I'm sure they want to go, you know, but at the same time, it's an opportunity for him and the NFL picks up those costs.
Sounds amazing.
So I'd vote to suspend the rules to look at this today.
I'll second that.
So motion by Ms. Navyley, seconded by Mr. McDebit, to suspend the rules to then vote on this overnight trip.
Because Jan, it's in January, isn't it?
Yes. Mr. Truzzi?
Suspend the rules?
Yes.
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 And yes, okay. Any discussion about the trip, or do we want to make a motion?
My first question would be, is this student over 18 by chance?
I don't know, he's probably, he's a senior, so 17 or 18. We could check.
What?
My concern about this is that we have a one-to-one student-teacher ratio. And in the youth-serving organizations that I've worked with, churches, Boy Scouts.
The rule of three?
Having that one-to-one ratio is a concern to me. I understand that the situation is almost created by the National Football League. You know, they're not a youth-serving organization, so they probably didn't think this through. It would have been much better if they asked for two students. I wouldn't hesitate for a minute if we had two students going. It concerns me that we have the one-to-one. If we have an 18-year-old student, I think we have a little bit different situation than a 17-year-old student.
I, it would be hard for me to share that anyways, you know, personal information, student privacy. But that being said.
So there are two teachers going?
There, not officially.
Not according to this request.
Right, but we do have another teacher that works in our district full-time that will also be on the trip. But as you can see, he's not staying in the coach's room. The travel is by airplane.
But he could be staying in a room with, to Helen's point, he'd be staying in a room with a kid who's 18 and 19 years old.
Yeah, he'll be staying with another senior from somewhere in the United States.
I mean, I, this is an amazing trip and I, I don't want to be the, but I share a lot of the same thing that Helen started with, your question too. How about, how about our liability here, something that does, God forbid?
That's why we, that's why it's in front of you tonight. This is the forms that Suzanne Egan said is how we should proceed.
Yeah, I mean, this is how we should proceed, but I'm curious to know what our, yeah. It's just difficult to talk about because it's such an amazing honor for John to be chosen as one of 32, one of 32 coaches in the entire United States. But I mean, we have our responsibilities as well to, to the student. And I don't know if there's anything in here that kind of indicates where, you know, again, sorry, I'll put my lorry hat on for a second, but I mean, if he's bunking with a kid who's 19 years old, I mean, we would never allow that unless that kid was core checked, right? We wouldn't, we wouldn't allow that to happen. So we don't know who this kid is doing, but is that a point?
Yeah, it would be a student-athlete cap selected by the coach.
I know you don't have the answer, but my, my point is we just don't know anything about the definitive accommodations that this student's going to be in. And I think, you know, for example, if the person was going to be 25, I'll be a little more nervous about that, wouldn't I? I, I don't know, I.
Suzanne Egan said, you know, in the sense of, this is the best way for us to proceed. It affects the district in the best way with all the understanding of the small caveats here. You know, I think it would have been easier if his parents wanted to go. But I also have a concern if the student wanted to go anyway, you know, that would, I guess, be a family decision.
Is John's, is the coach's family going as well?
Yeah.
And they're in adjoining rooms?
Yep, that's my understanding.
And help me understand why we need to take action tonight rather than waiting until the 3rd of January?
I think it has to, my understanding.
I don't know what would change between now and then, I'm just.
So my understanding is, talking to Principal Jackson and the coach, is that I think the preparations have to be made in terms of all the accommodations, et cetera.
They need to, are you going to go out?
Well, they probably have to, you know, all of that stuff, so.
And the coach has also signed the ethics disclosure form as well.
Something in here says they need information by tomorrow.
Oh, good, I didn't see that word.
But that may not be related to that.
Remember also, the parents understand exactly what this is and are signing off on this trip.
Do they sign a waiver or something like that for them, for him going?
Have you seen our field trip policy, wait? How many pages?
Three.
Yeah, when I was principal, it was scary for the elementary.
Very single-spaced.
The lawyerly language about accidentous memory, I mean, all sorts of things. The parents would be like, well, they're going to the Hawthorne House, I mean, how is this possible? Host of the Gables.
So if we were to not approve this and the student went anyway and the student had a need, the school would have no ability to assist the student without a liability concern?
Yeah, I mean.
So I mean, say the student falls down, hits his head, needs to go to the hospital or needs stitches or whatever like that. Having it be a field trip means that the coach, who would be the chaperone, would have the ability to take the student to the hospital and, you know, do those sorts of things.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. And ultimately, it's the parent's decision if they feel comfortable with them participating in this activity with all the, if they sign all the appropriate forms.
When they have?
Well, we haven't approved it, so they can't.
You know, I had a lot of questions about it. I thought that the parents were going, and if the parents were going, it's a totally different story. Because it really, I wouldn't bring it to you guys because the parents are taking the student on something that, I mean, we, kids go skiing competitions, dance, all sorts of things. That being said, it would be a financial burden on the parents to have to go.
Ski trips and stuff aren't typically overnight and it wasn't a one-to-one, so, I mean, I.
I'm not sure, in the past, I can't speak to it. I know we've had some, I don't know if it's been one or two. We've had some kids go to like Nationals for track.
There's usually a parent.
Okay, so, you know, certainly this is what Suzanne recommended because I didn't have the answers necessarily. It's a really unique.
It is.
It's a really unique situation. So ultimately, you know, if it's a field trip, parents have to make a decision on whether they want their son or person to go. Suzanne feels that the liability is covered through our procedures, our field trip stuff. That's why I met with her on it and.
But if the student is 18 and something were to happen, that's still just as problematic as if they were 17. Other than the liability, is that, I mean, it's still, it would still be problematic.
You know, I have to say that the one-on-one continues to concern me.
Yeah, I mean, certainly.
You know, there were, there were articles in the paper not all that long ago about coaches doing inappropriate things. Not that I'm suggesting by any means that this coach is going to do anything inappropriate, but if we set a precedent, if we start doing things, it just concerns me. If we had, you know, another month or two months or, you know, a lot more time, we could think about, you know, what's the best way to do this? But the truth of the matter is, we're going to say yes or no to this tonight and.
Right, but this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing. I mean, I agree with all of that.
I mean, the other option is, you know, if, if, and I can't make this promise, I'm just saying, the other option would be if the other employee from the district, even if it's the wife, wanted to be a chaperone, then instead of, you know, hypothetically, an unpaid day off or a personal day, that could be the case, too. My understanding is that they're both going.
I share all Helen's sentiments, but given that Dave's is an extraordinary case and I'm willing to approve it. You know, everything you say, Helen, I agree with as a policy, but there are always those exceptions. And this is just a, again, it's just an incredible honor for John to get this. And obviously, the student participated, worked hard and probably deserves, definitely deserves this, you know, this opportunity, so I'm prepared to vote for it. With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve this overnight trip, sub-overnight trip, as presented the packet to Disney for the football coach and the player, the student-player.
Motion by Mr. Truzzi, seconded by Mr. McDebit. Any other discussion?
I just want to reiterate everything you're saying, you know, for a policy decision, I feel exactly the same way, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I wish I could have come more, I mean, really, literally, this just happened. I think the game was December.
Yeah.
First.
First or second. The NFL moved pretty quickly. I know this, typically what I like to do, as superintendent and only six months in, is I always like to know what the principal supports, you know, and I completely, you know, that's why I always had the same questions and that's why I went to see Suzanne Egan. I just think that it's really unique in the sense of it's just different. And I don't think there's a lot of precedent because the NFL has never invited a kid to go with the coach before. And now they're inviting a kid to go with 32 coaches. 32 kids, 32 coaches.
I hope in the future for the NFL that they'll invite 32 coaches and 64 kids. It changes the. changes the whole count.
You're right.
If they can afford it.
That's true.
But that would be great feedback for them to get, actually.
I would be happy to write a letter to them.
You should go with them and tell them. Then we get the tooth.
You know, what are you wasting on me?
You know, if, if you wished, I mean, I could certainly inquire, I mean, you're going to have to make a decision tonight as a group, that's your decision. I could certainly inquire if we wanted to officially add the wife, who's our full-time employee, is another chaperone?
I hate to be a naysayer, but again, in, in the youth-serving organizations that I work with, churches and Boy Scouts and, and others, a husband-wife team is no more safe than a one-to-one.
Yeah, and I just, I think it's a, you know, the world that's out there, I mean, we have a lot of field trips where students get to, you know, go off to a museum in Washington, DC, whether by themselves or with a group of people. You know, there's, they're all different.
There's risks everywhere and everything that we do. I understand that.
Yeah. I would just say this. I support it because of Mr. Jackson, feels so confident about it. He hired Coach Dubzinski, trusts his judgment. And last but not least, I can assure you that I'm not sure we're even going to have to have a policy committee to look at this because I don't think this will ever happen again. Well, I hope it happens next year, so.
All right. Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
Mr. McDebit?
Aye.
Ms. Picard?
No.
Ms. Maybley?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so four one.
Whoever has a field trip for, been so stressful.
And it's such an incredible honor, too.
I would love for this student to go. I just.
No, you're absolutely right.
You're right to your issues.
Yes.
I've done, you know, we know too much about Penn State and we know too much about too many situations. And I'm, I'm sorry. Hope that's not heard as, as unsupportive. I really hope they never want to.
No.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
I appreciate the questions and all of that.
Just an exceptional situation.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a school building committee update?
I, I thought yesterday.
You thought the last one was last one?
Never over.
I thought this was going to be the last one. We met last night, school building committee got together. We actually had everyone together because we thought it was going to be our last meeting. We are going to be one more time, as it turns out. This weather has just been so awful. So obviously, the, the two things we've been talking about, the, the canopy and the, the site work, the, the final paving have been delayed over time and time again. We're not going to be doing the paving this year. So I think next week, when the school's out of session, they're going to, they're going to, they know the castings are up.
Yeah.
So they'll be lowered next week. And we'll just do the final paving in the spring. Just, you can't pave when it's this cold.
No.
The canopy did go up last weekend. They need to, they're going to hopefully paint it this weekend, weather permitting. It has to be over like 43.
Is this in front of the door? Is that?
Yeah, the canopy.
It's pretty cool.
I haven't seen it.
It's up. It's up. So they need, they need to paint that and then put in some panels on it. And that's like the last thing that Triumph, our general contractor, should do. So we voted as a school building committee last night to release the retainage. Of like 35,000. Okay, I'm going to get there. I'm going to get there. We're holding back a, a small amount of $35,000 to ensure that what has to be done.
In the spring?
No, no. That, the paint, we, we paid off the money yesterday except for $35,000, which is way more than the paint and what needs to be done anyways. But, so we will have to meet one more time, probably in January, if this gets done this weekend. So basically, this is a last shot. If it doesn't get done this Saturday, it will be in the spring. Another part is, it was Christina Minakuchi's last meeting as a member of the school building committee. She resigned. Obviously, she's going to come to state up on January 2nd. So I thanked her for her service. She was our appointment, so at some point, we're going to replace her. Probably doesn't mean anytime soon, but something we need to do in the future.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Witten?
No comment.
Are you a barber son?
Yeah, a barber son.
And no comment? Really? Skipper generator?
Mr. Witten, what's your, what's your major?
I'm a political science major and education minor.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I did really appreciate his mom saying, I can make him do anything from directing the outfit.
All right. I'll entertain, oh, are there any last comments?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Wow.
I would, I would just make a couple of comments. One, I went to the understanding our differences at Thompson School a, a little while back. And one of the things that I heard the student panel say, we had four high school students, maybe four, I believe it was four.
It should be four, yeah.
Four high school students speak about their experiences with having disabilities. And they spoke so well and they, one of the things they talked about was how hard it was to change to different schools. Several of them had been placed out of district or had come from a private setting or, or some other setting. So I just want to celebrate how much we've done to try to make it so that our kids can stay in district. I think that's really important. And I really am grateful for that. And the other thing is, I did go to the alumni lunch today. I happened to have a 2018 graduate of North Andover High School. Not only were the questions great that they had in, in the formal session, but it was so nice to see these kids rub elbows with each other and be able to ask each other questions about how it's going and what the experience was. I know they're going to see their closest friends. They're going to connect with them. But those kids that are a little further out of their group that they're friendly with but aren't necessarily going to, you know, get together with or anything, I just think it was a really tremendous support. And I feel like, again, that's one of those things that makes North Andover special.
Totally agree.
This is the 35th year, started by retired teacher Raymond Gray, AP history.
Great program.
All right. If there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn to our next meeting on January 3rd, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDebit, seconded by Mr. Trizzi. Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
Thank you all.
Good night.